Their suspense time that they've all worked is now accrued to an excess of that standard hours worked. So I'm proposing that we pay them out at time and a half, which is the overtime rate for all of the suspense hours that are in excess, and then the holiday hours, we pay them out at hour for hour. To make it whole and vacation, I believe, has been for all city employees, they have excess in their vacation hours. And I'm pretty sure that action is being taken to roll over into 2022.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would apologize. I did take these out of order. So Chief is discussing item B on the agenda, and we will come circle right back to item A. So when he's referring to vacation rollovers, that would be item A. So my apologies.
Thanks.
There's two parts to that, correct? And that's with the independent school district too, then?
So the second part is the our agreement, which is fantastic with the school district 622 leadership. Love the relationship that we have with them. And right now, how it's set up in the in the contract with them, they pay us, I think it's $74,160 to have a school resource officer, one of our officers in their building every day of the school year. And then they also frequently request officer coverage at a handful of sporting events or any event, which then our officers work and they put on their time sheets overtime. The school has agreed to reimburse us as a city for that. Currently, it's just going back into the the general fund, the 74,160, which is the contractual rate for school resource officer and any overtime hours. So totally fine keeping the 74,160 in the general fund where it is currently. But then those excess hours that our officers are putting in as overtime hours on their time sheets, which this school district is reimbursing us for, I would like to see those back into the police budget. And then that would hopefully reduce our excess overtime budget where it is right now. Because that's a handful of money coming back in to the city's pocket when it should. I'm proposing go back into the police department overtime budget.
I guess that's a question for the Finance Director. Does that make sense for that to be done in that order?
Mr. Mayor, council members, yes, to me, I consider 2021 done, complete and over. This is really looking at it in the future and for 2022. The police department, as you're all aware, is already in the general fund. Part of a revenue stream in the general fund is that $74,160. So it's not directly funding the police department, it's indirectly. But then so are the so is the levy and the taxpayers. What the police chief is asking for is if there's revenue in excess of that $74,000, that we basically amend the budget by doing an increase in appropriation and increase in revenue. That's particular to the police department. Therefore, he would have the ability to utilize those funds. I'm okay with that as long as the amendment that we do to the budget, and I would feel more comfortable that we would periodically take it to the city council for their approval, would be done after we actually receipt the money, that we don't do an increase of an estimated appropriation in revenue. We'll do it as we've actually reseeded those funds in. And then we would bring an item just to amend the budget for the police department.
Councilmember Peterson.
Dan, is this going to be a regular occurrence? I mean, if we get fully staffed, that's this is going to go away. I mean, there's going to be overtime, I get that. But it will help if we want to get a full complement of officers, or I'm not understanding it.
So for this, the school district created overtime, that's?
Yeah, I get that part.
Okay, the suspense time, the first part on suspense time. The sad answer is there's no assurance that we're not going to be back in the same situation due to the pandemic. The numbers that I put on the memo have already increased by two. I had four have been out since I started with the city due to COVID-19 quarantine. But now are two higher than that. So that's not a short timeframe that they're out that then creates the scenario where we have to ask other officers to cover that, which then throws the suspense time all out of the plan. So it will absolutely help as far as staffing to get fully complimented when we can hire and have a staff closer to where we are slated for with 18 for 2022. But it's, you know, there's no guarantee that's going to eliminate it with the pandemic going on.
Any other questions? Councilmember Thorson.
Since we're talking about staffing, where are we at with officers that are injured and coming back? Is there an estimate on when they will return? Because I know that's something at least we can know someone's injured and they're expected to be out six months. Where are we at in that timeframe?
Sure.
If someone gets COVID, it's hard to predict.
So we have one, we're one short right now. It was a tough decision to make, but we we had to let go of our two longstanding officers, December 31 of 2021. So they are off of the complement, which now we'll be able to hire in their replacement of fully to get us back up to that 18. And then there is one that is out right now. So we're down three currently.
There's one out injured or one out?
One out on FMLA leave.
So there were two officers that were let go?
There were.
And they were both injured?
On duty, correct. So that happened back in?
I didn't think you'd let someone go if they're injured on the job. I don't understand the circumstances. Maybe we can discuss that a little further. And I know we understand we have to be mindful of protections about discussing medical information and whatnot. But if we know there's employees that are on medical?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Thorson, you know, this occurred prior to my tenure. But I will say that I asked many of the same questions. And I do know that this was thoroughly thoroughly vetted through and working in concert with the city attorney. So all personnel and human resources practices were properly followed.
And so there's a bank of officers that we've been working on to try to get on board?
Yeah, it's a it's a very small bank, as every agency in the country likely has seen. Yeah, we had seven applications in for police officer. We're not eliminating the physical agility testing throughout our hiring process because I don't want to reduce our standards that we've we've set forever. So hopefully that number isn't decreased by any. But yeah, we currently have seven applicants for police officer position openings.
Do you have a timeline and about when that would occur?
Yeah, they're taking the road test on Thursday this week, some on Friday, followed by interviews the next week. And then following interviews, it's backgrounds for any anyone that scores high enough from the remaining pool. And then that can take anywhere between two to four weeks to properly do a background of them. And then followed by conditional offers, passing of the medical exam, psychological exam. And then if they pass all that, then they'll start. So I'd say two-ish months.
About March?
Yeah, sounds right.
Is it pretty much the the whole police force itself is under that overtime? Or is it just a few officers that took more of the responsibility than other ones or?
It wasn't really something that any of them created. So like if there was a hole, which there were a lot of in 2021, that's when me and the other sergeants were nearly begging people to fill the holes that were created. So with that came a lot of night shifters going to day shift and we're basically broken up into two sides of the schedule. There's a A team and a B team. So when we're on a four-on-four schedule, when somebody has their four days off, the other team's working. So if somebody went out on day two from either one of the teams, you know, we were at a point where we didn't care who it was that was working the shift. We needed somebody to get in a squad car and respond to emergency calls for service. So if that was night shifter from the opposite team coming to the other team to work a patrol shift, that's what throws that suspense bank out of out of balance because they're not staying on their scheduled four-on-four off. They're working days that they shouldn't have been working on a different schedule, basically. If that makes sense. So some some pay periods, they're accruing more naturally because they're working more in the in the pay period. And other ones, they're working less. If they're following proper schedule, if the shift allows it, then it all levels out. But if they jump to another team and they're filling in for somebody who's out, then that's that's where we get the excess balance.
The problem was they wanted to take vacation, but couldn't?
They wanted to just take a normal day off. So that's them coming in on their scheduled day off of their four-on-four off. They're not supposed to be working. And we're saying, well, we're in day one of the other rotation. We don't have anybody to fill this car. We will take anybody who's willing and able and healthy enough to do it to respond to calls and fill the shift. Otherwise, we're down two. And we were there on Sunday night, you know, almost only had one one car in the street, which is terrible. So it was and it was like that through the entire year. And it was, you know, the pandemic injuries. People just weren't getting days off. So they're working on the opposite schedules and they're filling in when we asked them to. And I think they're pretty fed up of stepping up when we had to ask them so much and not taking their proper days off. And I'm sure that their significant others would support that due to their lack of time being at home throughout the entire year, really. So it's been a it's been heavy on the ask for them to fill extra shifts.
And Finance Director, we so this is a budgeted, non-budget item. Are we, do we have the money in the budget for this?
Mayor, council members, yes, I've done a preliminary kind of look at where we're at right now for the 2021 in the general fund. And we're actually sitting in a pretty good position. A very conservative kind of estimate for year end is that we probably should be somewhere in the in the tune of about $600,000 to the positive. Part of it's due to increasing revenues to permitting and then not expending across all the all the departments. I do want to make a note that a part of that savings that is there has been realized through in 2021, there was the establishment of an internal service fund for severance payments. It's the first year. The concept is a fantastic concept, needs to be looked at when we go into the budget for 2023. We charge departments approximately $44,000. We've had some big severance payments this past year. We actually have a negative balance right now of about $220,000. That's not including the the two payouts for the two police officers that were terminated at the end of the year here. So that'll be part of it. So I will be, once we get down to a little bit further down the road, probably later part of February, early March, be bringing in an item to ask for a transfer out of the 2021 to go from the general fund to that severance fund so we don't have a negative balance in that fund. That won't look good for us for our financial statements. And then in addition, we're going to be issuing bonds here in this first part of 2022. But that's part of how the the savings have been realized is the concept of that severance fund. But we'll have to contribute more to that in the future.
Councilmember Thorson.
Just trying to wrap my head around because I wasn't aware that we had two officers that were let go. They weren't necessarily working because they were on. They were injured, whatever is injuries are or whatever. What is there some terminology in the police department when they call when someone's injured on the job and they're not working?
Injured on duty, but they go, they fall under FMLA, yeah.
And if we're facing a staffing shortage, was there some indication that these officers didn't want to come back? Or they were, there was no interest in returning? Is that why this termination? Because it just seems like we're we're setting ourselves up to have further issue if these two could come on. And whenever, I don't know what the timeframe is, a month, a week, a year? And we're looking to, is this part of that decision made to expedite the hiring of new officers? And that that may have prevented us from hiring two additional officers because these two are unknown? I guess I'm just not following what?
Sure, so just a little bit on that. Worst decision I've ever had to support was letting go of officers. It's terrible. They're they're great officers, well-liked within the community and and great cops. So that was that was very tough. As far as all the information, there was no indication that their return was likely. So that's what led to us parting ways. So so with the and with the injuries happening back in in spring, that's has been a part of where we are right now with suspense time due to those being two constant holes in the schedule for nine months. So.
Well, I mean, what's what's being asked to me, it just seems to make sense and it's fair to officers. I mean, they're, we're in a position where it's kind of, we're at their mercy to come in and cover. Because otherwise, what are we going to do?
We're going to lose them.
Yeah, and then that's putting stresses on other officers who are constantly being called in to work on their day off. I know they probably wouldn't necessarily appreciate that, especially if you have family and trying to plan vacations and whatnot. So, you know, what's the overall budget figure on this is, you know, Brian or Dan, excuse me. You've got some sort of figure on that, just so we're aware. I know we asked if it was going to impact the budget, but what's, do we know what the total amount is on the?
Yep. Yes, Councilmember Thorson, the suspense and holiday payout right now, there's still one week to be paid out of the 2021 budget. Including taxes would amount to approximately $34,200.
And then in theory, if we can reach a fully staffed patrol officer police force, you know, and get sick and then this problem goes away?
Yeah, you know, 90%, yes. But then there's always the pandemic possibility of, you know, us having an entire shift out again for the unforeseen future. But yeah, this would absolutely retain our current staff. And I mentioned it in there, but if you go on the the postboard hiring website, the officers basically have freedom to work for any police department in the state right now. So it's things like this, taking care of our our team, that will go a long ways to retaining them and saying, yep, I work for a city that appreciates me. And, you know, I'm not, I don't want to go anywhere because of that.
Chief, thank you for bringing up work-life balance. I think that's extremely critical, especially in your roles. I do have some questions in regards to some of that overtime hours. So this is pertinent to the SRO. So about how many hours do you think the SRO, you know, spends on those additional games or whatever? How many hours do you think that that takes?
So it's kind of based on the school's request. So if I had to put a number, it'd be three hours for every, every, half the basketball games, half the football games. You know, as much as the school is requesting, but they're not just requesting the use of the assigned school resource officer. It's, hey, can we have three officers for this game? So you times, you know, one overtime rate by three. And then there you're getting three for each game. I don't have, I'm not great at math. But it's a it's a lot of hours that the school is requesting. And then we're working and then being reimbursed for those hours that were worked.
Are those hours that would be paid for by the school district? Are those hours, can those hours and that payment go towards paying some of the vacation days?
So vacation days are just, you know, those are accrued over, or you're saying for the the payouts of excess suspense? I mean, I think our overtime budget's already in a terrible position when it comes to. I don't, I don't think it would cover it, to be totally honest. But it's, yeah, I mean, it's money that the school is saying, yes, we want these officers, we're going to hire them. Here's the agreed-upon rate due to the contract that we have with them. But yeah, vacation use, which hasn't been allowed, I think that's rolling over into 2022. So hopefully this year we'll allow that proper use.
Councilmember Cole.
Thank you. From, so I break this down into two topics. Topic one is the reimbursement of unused vacation time, et cetera. I wholeheartedly support exactly what you just said. I feel that the city needs to to demonstrate to the officers that gave up their time, gave up their time away from home, gave up their vacations to do whatever was need needed to be done for the city. So from that standpoint, and I, the dollar amount wasn't as large as I thought it was going to be. So from from that standpoint, you've got my full full support on on moving forward with that. The second piece, I guess, is more, you know, a financial aspect of it. And I guess, I guess I look to Finance Director Winnick as far as if it goes into bucket A and it gets moved to bucket B or stays in bucket A. Does it impact your ability to make sure that you're staffed properly from a from holding you tight to your overtime budget? We blew it out of the water this year, I know we had to have. So I mean, and it got paid. So is it, is it just a financial thing? Does it make make it easier for you? Help me understand that just a little bit.
Sure, so basically, if if we were to continue with the the reimbursements for overtime that the school is paying us, currently not going back into the police department budget, then that's going to eliminate use of of overtime for other things. Like if there's a a major event going on in the city and we want to have a team staff that or any kind of special detail, that's going to reduce the amount of overtime money in that in that account, even though whatever portion of it's being reimbursed, but it's not being tied back to our overtime budget currently. If that's, uh, sounds right from my finance director over here.
Does the finance director walk down to your office when you overspend and?
Yeah, only a couple times.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's whatever tool you need to make sure that the city's protected and you're you're staffed properly. I guess I would, I would look more to Finance Director Winnick from the whole bucket A, bucket B thing.
Appreciate it.
So Councilmember Cole, I have a little bit different perspective on how I look at this versus.
You went to finance school, though, I didn't.
The police, the police chief. I have no objection for the for the current budget year of 2022. If 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 the police chief would like to reappropriate additional revenue that they that that he may receive from the school district. That'll be a decision when we move into the budget for 2023, whether we want to continue to allow that to happen or not. Just like part of the the budget discussion, you know, we we've estimated a revenue of that $74,160 that helped offset. One thing that I think really can't be overlooked is the support that the city council has given towards public safety. And everything that the police chief has said is absolutely true. There is so much uncertainty from hiring, from the impacts of COVID and everything else. However, this city council has supported every single step along the way and has allowed the overtime to to go above the level that it's, you know, it's approaching three times what was budgeted. You authorized earlier last year to go out and hire additional officers. So I I look at what issues that the police chief have are city issues and regarding the public safety. And that what he's talking about as far as the school district amount is really a small amount. Will not solve his overall problem if we end up not being able to to fully staff our our workforce and/or we get more impact because of COVID. It'll be an item that would have to be brought up. The city manager would have to bring in an item up in front of the city council. We'll have to find a way to be able to fund that to keep the city as safe as it is. So I look at it from the standpoint in a very simple way is that his issues are real. His issues will be brought back if they run above budget. And I will be down there going, hey, you're you're over your your budget. But I think the city manager and the city council will be be looking for solutions of how we can fund that additional need that we have to keep the residents of the city protected. So and you've already proven that, so.
And I think that ties in with A, I think it ties in together, the two, so if you want to. Unless there's other questions in regards to topic B, I think topic A is kind of the kind of the same scenario.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. So I'm a fan of NASA, and in every NASA mission, they expect a glitch. And so the hope is always that it happens early and that it be minor. So now that we've got this one out of the way, I apologize for getting those out of order. This item is, as we've discussed, a temporary pause on the vacation accrual provision. Every year, the city has a limit on the number of vacation days that can be rolled over to the next year. We're asking that that limit be waived for year-end 2021 into 2022. You know, 2021 has been an unusual year for a couple of reasons. One is something affecting everyone everywhere, and that's obviously the pandemic. You've heard from the police chief how that's impacted his operations. It's impacted every city department in some way, shape, or form. It's impacted all of your lives, so I know you're well aware of that. The other issue has been the unusually high degree of turnover with city staff in 2021. That really changed the, the needs that the city had for employees and really kept people from taking the vacation days that they normally would have, would have taken. Even in a normal year, my understanding is that this item has been considered and approved on occasion in the past. But again, I think 2021 was an extraordinary year. So we are asking that, that those limitations on the amount of hours that be, can roll over be waived. My understanding is that the limitations vary from employee to employee based on their length of tenure. I'm not, I'm not exactly positive, but that's my understanding. So I can't give you a number of hours per employee. And in terms of budgetary impacts of this particular item, the vacation rollover, really the only time it becomes a budget impact is if an employee has a separation of employment and they have accrued vacation hours to be paid out. And so this would increase the number of vacation hours that would be paid out to a, a departing employee. And I, as a part of this, you know, I would tell you that if that were to occur, if we had employees leave with the excess vacation, even in a normal hiring process, if, if employee A resigns or is terminated for whatever reason, with the recruiting process, it usually takes a month, six weeks, two months to get that position filled anyway. And so you've got that time that had been expected to be paying out in salary. So if that's being paid out in a vacation accrual, that shouldn't have extraordinary budget impacts. And we will look at that if there's a separation of employment for an employee that has an extra-large vacation payout. You know, we'll discuss it with the department director, with the HR, with Jenny, and make sure that we are making our hiring decision, timing decisions. With that in mind, that wouldn't be a determining factor of deciding, you know, when we would post for a job, but it's, it would be a factor to consider.
Councilmember Peterson.
Did we do this last year because of the pandemic? I mean, I can't remember recalling. I mean, I'm okay, I'm, I'm fine with it, I just, I don't know the history. You said this has been done before. I don't know in my tenure, maybe. And I get it, but.
I think it was.
Was it?
Partially done, but I.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know 100%. We've got all new guys here.
Yeah, we don't know nothing. Thanks, Ron.
Anybody else?
It's good. I thank you for all you do, for your staff and all the police officers and what they've gone through the last year, and it has been a kind of unusual year and, you know, and you being the new guy, you've been doing a great job and we respect that and, you know, I'm, I'm okay with, with everything too, what's being presented.
Appreciate it. Yeah, it is, it, it's a great team, and I, I really think this will help do the right thing and, and keep them wanting to be a part of this team. So I appreciate your supportive words.
Since you're here, we might as well get an update on what's going on in the police department. We just found out that we, we lost two.
Yeah.
So, anything else? Any other updates you want to give us?
Just, just this, more of the same. I mean, it's been a lot of holes lately, so the, the start, start of the year hasn't been great when it comes to fully staffing every position. So it, it's been a, a tough start. I, I love the team that we have and where we're going to go in the rest of the year. Hopefully getting some new officers on board is going to help everything from morale and, and reduce the demands on our, our whole team. So no, I'm, I'm excited about 2022 and bringing some new things. You know, one of them is with a phlebotomy grant and, and open to bring, just in, in inspire some, some changes around when it comes to different opportunities, whether that's being a K-9 officer or just getting enough on the team, I think is our number one goal, is we just need to be fully staffed. And then it's going to be people able to spend time with their families and not be at work all the time, which I think is good in any environment that you're, you're in for work. So I'm excited about the year ahead.
Councilmember Peterson.
How did that Cub giveaway card, gift card go? Did that go good?
Good. I think we, we still have about half left, so it's, it's going well. Yeah, each, each time is just a different opportunity to, to help somebody out that we meet, so it's, yeah, it's, that's been awesome. Yeah.
Is it true when it gets cold out, the, the crime does go down, or is it?
Well, you know, I was, I was chasing somebody on foot yesterday, so I don't think crime's really subsiding much. It's, yeah, it's still been pretty active. There's, there's plenty of calls for service going, going on.
I know a lot of neighboring communities are coming together. Other mayors have reached out in regards to putting together, just a topic in regards to the amount of the, basically, it's the catalytic converters is what's really out of hand with a lot of the communities, not, you know, just in the city here, but even outlying of the cities. And, you know, so we're going to, I believe, have some sort of discussion with some of the mayors in regards to our neighboring cities of what can we do? How can we help? You know, just kind of brainstorm.
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to join you in that conversation or take part in any, any way that I can. You know, my immediate solution is just getting more cops on the street, and then there's, there's a lot of factors that go into just the, the overwhelming amount of crime going on throughout the, the metro. But staffing is a huge part of that. If we can get enough cops on the street to make arrests, then we have the other large issue of prosecutors and judges holding people accountable and keeping them in custody so they are not out the next day doing the same crime, and then two days later doing the same crime post-arrest. It's, it's a compounding issue, and, and not only just that, that quick release of somebody that's arrested, it's a morale killer, because you have patrol officers out there on the street, they do a great job getting somebody who committed a crime in custody safely, and then to see them back out on the street two days later doing the same crime is, you know, it, it brings the sense of, well, what are we, what are we doing as a police department? You know, if we, we, we're doing our job to make the arrest, but then they get out to do the same crime, that's, it's a, so going to meet with the, the county attorney on Friday with the other local chiefs to have that conversation and see what all we can do to hopefully reduce crime and improve morale, really, in, in our police department.
I hope you don't mind saying just for questions, because we've got plenty of.
Not at all. If you, if you want to fire away at.
Workshop is supposed to be a little more relaxed, so.
Sure.
You know, if any council member wants to ask the chief anything, a good time, this time to, to do it, because I, it's a very important part of our city is, is your role and what your officers do. Question for me is mental health. You know, I've heard of these pilot programs now that they offer some sort of mental health assistance in regards to some of the calls. I did see a Facebook post from one of your, from one of our residents in regards to what happened in regards to something that could have gone south real quick, but your officers, I think, handled it, you know, superbly and were able to de-escalate something that could have been, you know, very, a bad outcome. And I don't know if you want to maybe mention that, I don't know if all the council members saw that or not, but.
Yeah, no, that was just a, a great example of our, our fine officers that we have. I think that was a person in crisis call that they went to, and there was an onlooker with, with a video camera, just watching the interaction between our officers and, and this resident, and the person was absolutely in crisis. And it's just, you know, how, how, how long will you try to talk them down? And our officers have quite the long leash when they will exhaust any length of time if, if the call load allows for it, obviously, but to try to create a safe environment for anybody that they're interacting with, and that was a perfect example of it. The person that was watching their interaction wasn't expecting the end result of our officers saying, hey, we'll go buy you a pack of smokes, is that, if that's what's going to get you into the medical care that you need. And that was the, the tipping point for them, where they then agreed to get the help that they needed, but it was just our, our team of officers being able to de-escalate that situation and, and get the person that was in a crisis the help that they needed. So that was a, yeah, fantastic email to read, and our, and our Facebook message from a citizen who wasn't expecting that end result in that one incident, but there's, they do things like that all the time. They're, 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 they're going to the, the greatest lengths to ensure the safety of anybody that they're involved with or, or they encounter. And it's, it really is an awesome team, but that was a great example and a great message to read from a citizen.
Any other questions for?
Yeah, can you speak a little bit to kind of some of the top calls that you're experiencing right now?
Sure, there's still, that hasn't changed much. You know, we're, we're still getting a ton of medicals, and lately, it's, you know, it just, just from listening to, to the radio, not looking at stats, but catalytic converters are, are still something that we're going to. You know, violent calls, there's, there's domestics going on. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's a dangerous job, there's no, no doubt about it. But yeah, top, top call right now, I think, is still medical at number one that we're going to.
Would you include mental health crises in that medical?
Yeah, no, that's, that's categorized from a stats language that, that go, should go into a person in crisis category, but sometimes they are blended together into a, a medical call. But those are, those are up there also, which are, you know, dangerous and unpredictable calls, given, you know, what that person might have access to and whatever setting that we're, we're meeting them in. Yeah, it's, it's not getting any easier for our team of officers out there.
My understanding is that Ramsey County has approved some funding for domestic violence. I'm not sure the parameters around it or the requirements to access that funds, but I believe it's from, just from ARPA.
Okay.
So we may want to look into that as maybe a supplement to, you know, whatever, however you need to use that.
I did see something, I wonder if it's the, I read something on, the county's going to start dispatching medical or person in crisis calls? Is that maybe what you're referring to? They have a separate bank of folks that they're going to start diverting certain calls to? Does that sound accurate?
I've heard that before, but I think I'm maybe referring to something a little bit different, just funding opportunities that are related to domestic violence. So if it's anything we can do around prevention to kind of, you know, make sure that, you know, it doesn't escalate to that point or, you know.
Absolutely, yeah. No, if, if there's funding for it and it, it means that there's opportunities for more training and, and better service, absolutely. I'll, I'll see what, what's there.
Any others? Nope. Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Turn it over to City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of the workshop, I, I'm trying to.
I think we're done.
I think.
Yep, I think that's it. So no other business? Motion to adjourn.
I'll move, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson. Seconded by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Puts, adjourned. I tried to keep you.